Emily, I just sent you the streaming link. All right, I think we are all set. I will call us to order at 7:01. First up, well, hold on just a second. The members present are Sarah Gold, Megan Taylor, Emily Barron, Sarah Fox, and David Harris. MHTV is recording this meeting and it is being livestreamed to YouTube. Our first piece tonight is our new student representative, Yasen Cologne. Yasen, welcome. Good to have you. And I will let you take it away and give us an update on the first couple of days of school.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Yesterday, September 1st was our first day of school. The seniors greeted the freshmen and the freshmen had their freshman program in the morning. As far as COVID for the school goes with masks, most students are still doing well with masks. Like last year, our desks are still spaced. We have assigned seats and contact tracing to help reduce COVID as much as possible. Our outside lunch is also going well. We have more chairs to accommodate more students outside, so we can have as many outside as possible. For sports, most teams have finished their tryouts and are starting regular practice. The juniors have figured out their prom time and location. It will be at the Peabody Marriott on May 13th. And also, the magic block was introduced to students today, and I believe also this week. And the announcement was received well among the student body generally.
Great, Yasen. Can you explain to us a little bit what the magic block is?
Yes. So basically, every Wednesday, we will have slightly shortened classes and a 50-minute block that can be for really whatever students need it to be, if they need extra help with a teacher, if they need to make up a test. If they don't need to do any of those things, they can either have a quiet study or they can choose to take a mental break with activities like yoga or free time in the gym. Really just a nice way to either make up some work or take a mental break during the middle of the week.
Wonderful. That's great. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for joining us on just the second day of school. We appreciate it. We appreciate hearing that things are going well. And we'll look forward to having you back at the end of the month for our next meeting and hear how the first few weeks have gone.
Yeah. And if there are any topics in particular you would like to hear about from me, don't hesitate to ask. I'm always happy to let you guys know whatever you want to hear.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Yasen.
Yeah, thank you.
David, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, sure. Welcome, Yasen. Could you just tell us a little bit about yourself? Are you a junior, senior?
Yes, I am a junior at Marblehead High. As far as me personally at the school, I participate in a lot of extracurricular activities. I am in Dual Tones, the acapella group. I do math team, the National French Honor Society, National Green School Society. I like to think I'm pretty involved and I just like being a part of the school culture.
Excellent. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yasen came very highly recommended from Dan Howell, our previous representative.
Great.
All right. Thank you so much, Yasen.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, that will move us along to public comments. If you want to make a public comment, I'll ask that you use the raise hand function. We will also ask that people continue to keep their public comment to three minutes or less, as stipulated in our policy. This will allow us to hear from everyone who wants to comment, but we'll also keep our meeting on schedule as we work to understand everything going on in our district. Emily will again help us keep track for each of the public comment times. Jess Benedetto, I will ask just that everyone remember to state their full name and their address for the record as well. Go ahead, Jess.
Yes, hi. Jessica Benedetto, Bradley Road. So I want to applaud both Dr. Bucky and the school committee for agreeing to start a bus pilot program. I think this is very exciting and I really look forward to participating in this program in the school year. However, I would like to provide some feedback for constructive criticism on what we can do better in this program. First of all, I had spent, as you know, considerable time and effort outlining this program, meeting with you, John, and as well as several members of the school committee about it. And the specifics of the program that in detail I gave feedback, not only as a physician and the safety issue and the lack of sidewalks, which I won't get into that right now, but I gave a lot of feedback about specifics of the program to make it user-friendly for parents. If you're asking parents to buy into a program and spend money on a bus spot, it has to be a program where parents know what they're getting for that money. First, the program was sent out with a vague email offering some students a bus if they were more than two miles from school. It was unclear from parents whether one student qualified for that bus or everyone in the family. The vague email was very last minute. And then I got a vague email saying that there was an optional bus program and there was limited seats and I might be able to get a seat if I respond. The ability to apply for a seat didn't happen until the day before school started. You're asking parents to drive their kids to school to figure out a way to get their kids to school when they're working. It was opened up the day before school started. I got an email at 7:00 PM, 12 hours before the first day of school, that there was going to be a bus. I didn't know if it was starting the first day of school or if it was starting when the Brown School opened. The start times of the school were listed on the, but there were no specifics of the route when the bus was going to be at each stop. None of the specifics of the bus stop were communicated. The kids who got on that bus, they didn't know when the bus was going to come. They didn't know where to get the bus at their school. And they didn't know which bus they should be on or how to find the right bus. This has created a lot of anxiety among the kids who are taking the bus. The route times for each stop need to be outlined. We need to know how those route times are going to change with the Brown School opening. Is my child have to be out waiting for the bus an hour?
10 seconds remaining.
And so we need to not say that there's a shortage of drivers and that's why we can't implement the program. So far, on the bus from my end of town, I've seen 12 to 15 students using it. That bus has 72 seats on it. It's all smoke and mirrors. We don't know why there's only eight spots for the optional program. And we could get more kids, more parents paying for paid spots if we open it up to older kids as well. Those were many of the details that I outlined in my plan. And I offered to sit down with people over the summer when we were implementing this program so that I could help give parental feedback.
Time's up.
This program. And none of this happened. And I'd like to see some improvements.
Thank you, Jess. We'll certainly take that feedback. All right, that will move us along into our consent, action, and agenda items. First up, we had the memorandum of understanding with the Parks and Rec. Everybody had that in their Dropbox. John and I had met with the director of the Parks, the park section of the department, as well as with the chair of the Park and Rec Commission, and walked through this, made a couple of little tweaks to make sure that everybody was on the same page. And it was a really great meeting. They are excited, as we are, to be collaborating and kind of putting this all down on paper. And so I will open it up before we take the vote for any questions or comments. Sarah?
So my concern is it's still quite vague in the whole. The whole point was to kind of iron out the details so everything was clear. For instance, it talks about that Parks and Rec will mow the lawns at the school. Doesn't say how often. So they've always mowed the lawns. It's just sometimes it's once a month, sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less. I feel really strongly, we have to outline some type of frequency in there because with no frequency, it's no better than the situation we currently have. Also, you know, there's a lot of items that aren't outlined at all. You know, things that faculty and volunteers have just handled in the past. I'll give the example of, you know, when we were at Bell, we would have a winter and fall cleanup and it would be completely volunteer-led. Then we'd wind up with 60 or 70 leaf bags sitting on the front lawn. But then I would call Peter James and make arrangements for him to come pick up or I'd get volunteer. Like, this stuff needs to be ironed out in here that if we do the pickup, will they facilitate transporting the leaves and things then to the dump? Because when we're talking, you know, 50, 60, 70 leaves, bags of leaves that volunteers have picked up, those can't just sit and rot in the front of schools. So I just worry that what was outlined really doesn't really iron out the problem areas that we've experienced in past years. And I would like, I would like those issues to be ironed out. Obviously, we still need to talk about when budget season comes, a groundskeeper, because this doesn't talk about cutting our hedges and everything else that feeds into properly maintaining the outdoor spaces that just have never been done. But the basics of how we, how we transport, when we get the volunteers to clean up the waste, how often we're mowing, things like that, I think really needs to be laid out more clearly than currently is.
John, do you want to weigh in on that? Some of that we did talk about.
Yeah. When we met, this was actually something that Bill talked to me about when I first got here, that this is a uniqueness to Marblehead and that general understanding of who is responsible for what. So I wouldn't disagree with Sarah. It could be more specific, but I think this is a good first step in the right direction of trying to outline who does what. And since it is on a year-to-year basis, that it could be expanded in future years to add that specificity. But I do think that the meeting that Sarah and I had with Park and Rec, that the chair of their commission came out afterwards and was so grateful for the collaboration and the fact that both entities were getting at the table and talking about these things. And we shared some, some possibilities for the future of things that they were paying for that maybe the school department could pick up and vice versa. And so as budget rolls around, having this framework in place and identifying those specifics that aren't fully fleshed out. And certainly, the Brown School is the elephant in the room because there's a lot of landscaping there. And certainly, Park and Rec isn't going to be able to pick that up. So the groundskeeper that we didn't get in this year's budget will certainly come back around as a consideration for future budgets.
They did say as well that they were able to, for most of the time, that they would be able to mow the grass once a weekly, as we did. We did bring that up.
What was the decision not to put it?
We did talk about that, Sarah, about the frequency, because you had reached out to me. And so I included that in the conversation. They were just pointing out, as many municipalities are, that the ability this summer in particular of not having seasonal help or seasonal help that leaves, you know, some of them at early August to go back to school, that having the duration in there, they supported the idea but didn't know that they would always be able to meet that. And certainly, I don't see this as a, for lack of a better word, contractual obligation. If you don't do this, then this is the penalty for that. This is just codifying what has been happening in this community and who generally has responsibility for what. And each year, that might change as this year, they didn't have seasonal help. I know in my former community, the DPW is down 17 people. They normally hire nine seasonal workers. They had applications of zero this year. So in that instance, having the frequency in there, they wouldn't be able to meet that.
Right. And I'd like to just add, I think it's also an opportunity. You know, Michelle has recently become our assistant superintendent of operations. And I think working with Todd and going forward, she'll be developing relations, relationships with Park and Rec and understanding what the, what the needs are of the various schools. And that's something that we didn't have previously. So I think that's going to add a lot of communication. And I agree, Dr. Bucky, this isn't necessarily, you know, where we're going out to a professional landscaper that's, you know, mowing your property and what's the contractual agreement. I mean, we are a town of Marblehead and it's a memorandum of understanding. So from that standpoint, but I wanted to add a couple of things related to the Brown School as well. So in the agreement, managing of irrigation of all school district athletic fields. So we've made a significant investment in irrigating the property at the Brown School. And so the Park and Rec professionals that manage the irrigation at the various properties throughout the town will be coming to the Brown School in the next couple of weeks and participating in the training with Exquisite so that they clearly understand, you know, what's needed there. And there certainly will be more than most schools as far as winterizing, irrigation systems, the timing of the irrigation system. So Park and Rec is fully on board and will be participating in that program to understand the irrigation. And also, next Tuesday, Chip Osborne will be touring the site with, with left field and representatives from Exquisite to further understand the landscape. And I think while we have conceptually understand what the landscape will look like on paper, next Tuesday, the landscape will be close to, short of the sod being laid down, there'll be a much better idea of, you know, what it looks like. And we've also heard from Chip and his team that once the landscaping is done on or around the week of September 17th, that we'll be able to come back together and look at the finished landscape of the Brown School. And between the schools and Park and Rec have a good understanding of, okay, this is what we have now. This is, these are the plantings, these are the irrigation systems, this is the grass. And how do we work that out? And I feel very confident that both groups are in agreement that we want to do what's in the best interest in the town and as Dr. Bucky mentioned. And then we'll need to identify if there are shortages in manpower that will need to be budgeted for in the upcoming years.
Thanks, David. Megan, you had your hand up?
Yeah, you guys can hear me, right? David, thank you for walking through kind of how that's going to work with bringing in a new school online. That was one of my questions in here, so I appreciate that. But I think for me, this is really helpful, just laying out. The way I interpret it is that this is laying out the roles and responsibilities for both sides, for the school district as well as the recreation and park department. So, but I, I'm assuming that as we kind of go through the year with this being in place for the first time, that we'll find places where we need to adjust, right? But so I would like to ask that as we get kind of further into the budget season, that we come back with an update from you, you know, after talking with your counterpart to get an update so that we can review and consider what those budget implications might be. So if we can just make sure we get that added to an agenda kind of mid-year, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that was sort of how I started the meeting from, from my perspective, was that we just, we needed them to outline what they have been doing for us and what they can continue to do for us. And so that we were all on the same page, that, that, that we weren't anticipating they were going to be able to cover something that they could not cover. And so that once we roll around to budget season, that everybody knows, because it's one town department and another town department. So who's going to cover these things and who's, you know, if there isn't ask, who needs to ask? Who, who does that make the most sense for? And just so that everybody, again, is on that same page and, and there aren't any kind of ruffled feathers anywhere when something, you know, doesn't get done or a request needs to be made that, you know, that we're all working kind of in conjunction. Sarah, I know you had your hand back up as well.
Um, so I, I just feel like this, we were looking for clarity and this is not providing any clarity whatsoever. You know, will they, again, I'm not going to, I don't need to re-list the same things, but it's not just the Brown School. We have a half a dozen other properties that are, aren't being maintained. We hear constantly about the field of dandelions at Glover and, you know, the bushes at the high school and everything else. And I know this doesn't fall in Park and Rec and I'm not saying in any way it should, but we can't just keep not, not taking care of things and saying, but we were collaborative. And because quite honestly, it's, it's our duty to take care of the needs of the schools above and beyond collaboration. Collaboration's always great, but our first duty is to take care of the schools. And I don't feel that this collaborative document does anything to provide better maintenance and in care of the grounds at our schools. I, I'd like to see, even if it's bi-weekly with the goal of weekly, or like I said, just some, some contact, a list of, you know, with this many days' notice, we will help facilitate getting the, the, the fall and spring cleanups where they need to go. Like, we have to stop relying on the volunteers of this town to, to take care of what is our duty.
Well, well, respectfully, I mean, I think I have to disagree, Sarah. I've been, you know, so in my years in the finance committee and working on the budgeting and trying to understand who pays for the grass seed, who pays for the fertilizer, all you need to do is drive by Seaside Park. I mean, Seaside Park is used by the baseball team at the high school. It's all lined up. It's ready to go for the high school field hockey team. And they do a remarkable job on that property. And everybody's trying to do the best they can within the budget guidelines that we have. And I think I, I clearly hear what you're saying, that there are shortcomings in the staffing. And believe me, we had budget discussions 12 years ago about who was going to pay for grass seed with level-funded budgets. So I hear that and I don't disagree that we need to work to, along with potentially, you know, the facilities maintenance plan, understand specifically what the needs are for the maintenance of the schools. And I agree, but I think right now, given that budgets have been passed, this does at least set a framework. I think from the Park and Rec board perspective, and we're a school committee board, I think we can work together. And then I, I'm confident that when Michelle picks up the phone or Todd picks up the phone and they say, you know, we need something done over here at the schools for either opening or there's leaves or something like that, that if people develop better relationships with the people that we have, we'll try and do the best we can. But at the same time, I agree, we need to identify what needs to be done. But I, I feel real confident that Park and Rec is acting in our best interests. And I want to work with them to support what needs to be done and also support what we need for the schools to maintain our properties so that, as you say, we don't, we don't have a field of dandelions and the investments that we make in our properties, you know, are maintained. So it's, it's a, it's a good faith effort and it's a framework, but you're right. It doesn't have all of the details that we might look for to make it perfect. And we can.
Megan?
I just have a question, David, because you said something about, because we, with the facilities assessment that was done, did that include exterior pieces too, including like the landscaping and the, and the maintenance? Or is it truly just the buildings themselves?
It didn't talk about things like mowing schedule and, and day-to-day things. It did talk about clearly how often we need to be, and areas of immediate need where we need to replace, impatch sidewalks or repave. Like, in the next two years, we have to repave pretty much all of our parking lots to the tune of several hundred thousand. And it outlined things like that, but typical maintenance, like for instance, it didn't say like, you should be washing your floors daily or you should be like day-to-day weekly maintenance in our buildings that our custodians are doing. It did not get into that, to that level of things like that. Because it's, it's considered, that's considered like weekly and daily maintenance.
So I wonder if there's a way that we can add, because I think like what this MOU does do is it does lay out kind of like the, you know, does lay out the mowing, it does lay out, you know, the seeding and the, all that, those pieces. It does lay out the spring and fall cleanups and whatever. But the one thing from a school district standpoint, and I think this should probably come under facilities, is around, you know, the landscaping and the flower beds. So I would like to see that covered there somehow, so we get a full listing of everything that we're going to be responsible for, both exteriorly and interiorly buildings and the landscaping piece, so that we can, again, carry that through to the budgeting piece.
We, we did talk about that as part of our strategic plan, just a conversation of what needs to be done. For instance, that's where the bushes at the high school came from. Todd and Michelle kind of brought that up and how they need to be completely replaced essentially. But it wasn't part of the audit. That's, I thought, the question you were asking was, did the audit agency we contracted note those things? And they did not, but it is something we talk about at the facilities level. And essentially, what we've come up with is without a dedicated person, dedicated personnel on the school budget to do this, we know we have the need, it just, there's no one to do it. And I'm not poking at Park and Rec. This is our need. This is our responsibility. It is not their responsibility. We just don't have the funding to take care of it.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying is, okay, so my first question, you're right, was, was a part of the audit. But if it's not, as long as we're still kind of listing it as things we have to do and prioritizing it, just like we prioritize everything else when we go through the budget process, then this should be part of that. So if we need to replace a roof and replace all the bushes at the, at the high school or whatever it is, then those should all be on a priority list so that we can, from, again, from a facility standpoint, so that we can just kind of make sure that we've captured everything.
So I think, so kind of what you're saying, I think there's two separate things being talked about right now. Like what Rec and Park is doing, but then as the district, what we need to do that they don't do, but we need to figure out exactly what that is. And like Megan just said, make it part of our budget priorities, because that's not what's happening. But I think that's different than this MOU.
It is different. I think my point is like this, this MOU outlines exactly what we're responsible for.
Right. But I think it's more than just this, those few things. I think we must have to do more.
Okay.
Right?
It's, it's, you're, you're right.
Yeah. So I think that's kind of what's going on. There's like, we need to figure that whole thing out.
Right.
And it should be under facilities, I would think, right, Sarah?
Exactly.
Yeah, it's, and then, but you're right. It's two different conversations. One is we talk about the playbook. I don't know if you remember that. We bring up the play, like the, how there should be a, Jeffrey first said as the playbook. That, that second piece is in the playbook. But the, the MOU would be, you know, if, if we're going to leave mowing with them, we'll have to iron out how often that's done. Where the, I brought the playbook because it's listed as our responsibility. But like I said, I had formed the relationship on my side. And so like the teachers would call, this is when I was in the, it's actually still lingered till now. Teachers will call and say, we, we, our class did a cleanup. We have a lot of bags. And I would make the phone call, but that's not. And I would make the phone call, but that's not, that's quite honestly not functional. If we had it laid out that, you know, for the spring and fall cleanups with so many days notice, Park and Rec will facilitate transporting, things like that would be helpful. But I think this also, for some reason, we, I left the retreat thinking that this conversation was going to happen between Park and Rec and members of the facilities committee, because like we already knew the pieces we had talked about, so there wouldn't be this disconnect. But I, and then I, and then I thought it was John meeting just with Pete. I didn't realize that we had, Sarah had gone as the school committee rep. I think it probably moving forward, even if it's not going to be someone from facilities, that we should maybe have a conversation beforehand, just so that you know the, the facilities points that need to be taken care of.
Um, I, I believe that's how you had talked with John about the concern over the cut grass areas, because it had been sent out in, in an email saying that this meeting was happening and if you had any concerns to reach out to John. Because that.
Yeah, I thought it was just him, him meeting and, and I brought up the concern, but apparently it, it died.
No, it, it didn't. It, it got discussed and they committed to, oh, you know, as, as a weekly, basically a weekly mowing with sort of the caveat that if there wasn't personnel to do it, or if, you know, it had rained heavily a week before, so they hadn't gotten to different grounds that they needed to care for that week, that, you know, that they have their rotation. So it's not, you know, they aren't just ours, so they have other places where they're taking care of. So when they get behind in one, it makes them behind in others. And that's just kind of the reality of it. Meg?
So I think we've kind of talked this to death at this point. So I think this is a good starting point. I think we should see how it goes if we find we need to adjust from either their end or our end. This is not carved in stone. This is a starting point. So let's do that. If we can add to the agenda, kind of mid-year, a review before we get too far into budget season, I'll get to do that. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the MOU with Park and Rec.
Megan's made a motion. Can I get a second? David's second. All right. I will roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris.
Yes.
Megan Taylor.
Yes.
Sarah Fox.
Yes.
And Emily Baron.
Yes.
All right, that passes five to zero. Thank you, everyone. I know Park and Rec will be excited about that as well. All right, that moves us on to the approval of the custodian collective bargaining agreement for 2021 to 2024. This is just a little bit leftover from last year. Things with the language and everything got ironed out. This was in the Dropbox. Does anybody, well, I will ask for a motion to approve the custodian collective bargaining agreement from tw- for 2021 through 2024.
So moved.
Megan moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Emily, second. All right. Does anybody have any questions on it? Sarah?
Um, for the days off the holidays, Juneteenth, which is now a state holiday, was not listed. So we just need to amend it before we actually sign it to reflect that holiday.
Absolutely. So. And Juneteenth. All right, anybody else? Okay, I will take a roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris. You're muted, David. David, can you unmute to vote? I'll come back to you. Megan Taylor?
Sorry about that. Yes.
All right, David Harris. All right, thanks. Sarah Fox?
Yeah.
Emily Baron?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to zero with the note to add Juneteenth. Next up is the policy EBCFA face coverings that is background from last meeting. If you recall last meeting, I accidentally had the old face covering policy put in when we wanted to revise it to reflect a little bit more current pieces with DESI. So I had found the one from MASC. John had found one that he had discussed last week that had come from Triton. The language is very, very similar. I compared them. John is recommending that we go with the one from Triton, which is what you do have in your Dropbox. It's tailored to Marblehead Public School District. And one of the biggest pieces that differed is that if students are in violation of this policy, the student will be deemed ineligible to attend school until such time as they can comply. John, I'll let you just kind of fill the committee in on, on what your thinking is with that and why that was better than MASC.
Sure. It is the MASC policy, but it adds that differentiated language. I forwarded on to the committee, the legal advisory that talked about legal rights of students and student discipline and thirty-seven eight and a half. And this kind of makes it an eligibility requirement to attend as opposed to a progressive discipline. If you're not wearing your ma- mask once, this is the punishment. Twice, this is the punishment. It is, in order to be eligible to attend schools, you need to have a mask. And just like other vaccinations, people can get a religious exemption. They can do a mask exemption, but our policy states an eligibility requirement for Marblehead Public Schools is to wear the mask. And there have been a lot of conversations among the North Shore superintendents on mask policy and the one provided by MASC and the differentiated language. And given the legal brief that was provided, I think this is probably better for our district.
Any questions or comments? Um, I like this with the discipline piece, and I appreciate you filling us in on that because I think, you know, this isn't something that we want to discipline students on. We don't want kids getting in trouble. We just, you know, unfortunately can't have them in our buildings at this time if they're not wearing a mask. So I, I think that that was an important distinction and I appreciate that. David, did you have anything to say? You've got, you're unmuted.
Yeah. I, I do. I, I, the, the, the DESI guideline, I thought, was through October 1st. And we are, you know, we, we do have, you know, within our policy here, it says until further notice. I'm just not really sure about how I feel that, that we, that I'd like to say that the following requirements are in place until October 1st. Because that's how I understood what DESI's recommendation and that they said they were going to be providing guidance. I mean, we all know things could change in the other direction, but they said they were going to be providing information to the districts that would help them once they achieved eighty percent vaccination rate and how that would look leading up to October 1st. And our policy is saying until further notice. So I'm just wondering.
So I think, I fully anticipate that we'll have to come back to this and prob- you know, probably, maybe as soon as our, our next meeting, which is on the twenty-third, because we are pushing up against October and hopefully DESI will have, you know, at least be sort of providing some windows into what they're thinking by that point. As far as the October 1st goal with the eighty percent vaccination rate goes, because I know I sent you guys an email today from Deanna, that we are at above eighty percent for our population of students who can be vaccinated in both schools, at the high school, or at the sixteen to nineteen, we are well above it. So I do think that's going to be something that we will need to consider as that rolls around. So I think, you know, in my head, you know, similarly to last year, but, but probably much more quickly. So we are going to be circling back to this and revamping it and revoting it multiple times.
I think I'm, I'm good with that. Right. It does say until further notice. So I'm sure that if something changes, we'll be talking about it. So.
Yeah. John, did you have anything to say in this? Sarah, I see yours up.
Yes, I just assume that forthcoming guidance from DESI is going to start differentiating between vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals in terms of a face covering policy. So I think having this in place with the caveat that it will remain in place and still rescinded by the school committee gives you the flexibility that as they update their guidance, you have something in place that could be modified or updated.
Sarah?
Okay.
Um, and I just want to clarify for the, anybody in the community listening too, because I think one of the sources of frustration is people really feel like the goalposts keep moving. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly and the community is understanding it correctly, that it's, um, the October 1st eighty percent piece is eighty percent and it's not just eighty percent. My understanding is that you have vacci- eighty percent of your eligible population vaccinated and there's a certain break, they keep, the state keeps changing, whether it's a color coding system or an at red, like whatever they're referring to it as, but I thought it was that you had to be over eighty and whatever that system of alcohol risk that the state has issued is under a certain level. But if you're over that level, the eighty percent is, is a non-issue. And did I understand that correctly?
You did. We had a call with the commissioner this week and DPH has not weighed in with that metric yet. And I see Deanna on the screen and I invite her to jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but that, you are correct. It is the eighty percent vaccination rate and, but they have not determined what the and is at this point.
I just don't want the community to think we moved the goalpost. We know there's an and, we just, it hasn't been clarified for us. So we could have a hundred percent if we don't meet the and piece. October 1st is just kind of like a theoretical date from DESI. We have to meet the and piece.
Yeah, you're correct. And I think, you know, if I was reading it correctly, I think the one vote to the negative in that, in the commissioner's board was that exactly, that, that the goalpost kept moving and that there wasn't a clear and defined goalpost. And I think, you know, as we move forward, particularly if things go from where the state is guiding us into more local guidance, which I, I think that's what they were trying to do, but then sort of step back in, that that'll be an important piece for us as well, to, to make sure that our goalpost is very clearly defined, what masking does, what it doesn't, and, and, you know, at what point we're moving forward without them for, you know, whatever population we're talking about.
And, and if I, since Deanna and Dr. Bucky and I think Dan might even be on, how has it gone the first couple of days with the mask requirement being in place? I'm assuming it's been fine.
It's interesting. I was at the high school today with Dan during one of the passing periods and we stood at the top well. And he said, I imagine we'll have to do quite a few mask reminders. And we only had one and we probably had four hundred students, five hundred students pass us. So it was really gratifying for me and I know it was for Dan to be in the hallway and students during passing time and to only have to remind one student and it was just to pull it up above his nose.
It's great.
All right. So I will go ahead and ask for a motion to approve policy EBCFA face coverings as presented tonight.
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
David, second. All right. Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris.
Yes.
Megan Taylor.
Yes.
Sarah Fox.
Yes, sorry.
Thanks. And Emily Baron.
Yes.
All right, that passes five to zero. Thanks, everybody. All right, John, that leads us on to the superintendent report. You've got a few things you're going to give us, including start of school updates and some community outreach busing update and Chloe contract tracing update. Take it away.
All right, superintendent update. I heard loud and clear from our retreat that people wanted the meetings to be more efficient. And so rather than having each of our directors or principals weigh in on an update, I decided to ask them to provide an update to me and I'll share it with the committee. We start with back to school. For NAN and for me, it was so gratifying to see the schools fully open and operational and to be out with students. I started the day at Glover. I got to each of our buildings yesterday and each of the classrooms. I know NAN did the same thing and we just came back so exuberant being out. And part of the fun for me was walking around and being recognized by so many families and students. And as I walked around Glover, I stopped in each classroom and asked if they knew who I was. And whenever you pose that to an elementary school classroom, you're going to get a wide variety of answers, which is always fun. And the one that I enjoyed best was you're king of the schools. And so today I had to be back at Glover for something and I thought, well, you know, I'll just do another loop around. And sure enough, that young man was out in the hallway and he goes, hey, it's the king. And so those were better descriptions than I got at the high school today. It was funny, I stopped in a freshman biology class and said, does anybody know who I am? And it was a little disheartening because I spoke at their freshman orientation about two days ago. And so one said, are you one of our assistant principals? I said, no. Another one says, you're a music teacher here, right? I said, no. Finally, somebody goes, it's the superintendent. So it's nice to be recognized. And I know NAN had similar experiences yesterday. So just some reflection, reflections from central office staff, and I'm not going to read these to you, but director of facilities, Todd talks about having tents and air purifiers. And if you're a custodian in the first week of school, you are a super busy person because somebody wants something, needs something, needs something moved. So kudos to Todd and his staff. Paula, the director of student services is out in schools. Says that the student services, the things that fall under her umbrella, the counselors, the psychologist, the team chairs, those are all working well and she's excited for pre-K, TK and kindergarten, who will be starting with us next week. Little update from Richard, says students are happy to have hot lunch served again and that the response to lunch service was better than he had anticipated, which is always nice to hear. Did I repeat that? No. I missed somebody. Oh, yeah, I did repeat that. So athletics, Greg gives you an update that games are going to start Thursday. I had a chance to attend and I know Sarah, you were there last night for the parent meeting for athletics. And they'll have that presentation up on their website and they look forward to not having restrictions for fans and the masking outdoors. So it looks to be an exciting fall sports season. Deandra provided some reflections on our students from Boston. And there was a great welcome back event in Dorchester and you can see the picture. It's not the least distorted picture in the world, but we made Millie's Metgo update. Deandra is doing some really nice work with a Marblehead Families program that used to be known as Host Families. And she's already had sixteen families respond in the informant, in the affirmative that they would like to participate. So we'll perhaps get Deandra on a future agenda to talk about some of the really good stuff that's happening with our students from Boston. And then each principal weighed in. I, I think that it's nice to hear from each of our building principals. Variations on a theme. It went well. It went very well. It was great. It was fantastic. Quote to Mr. Oda, you can't tell, but I'm smiling underneath my mask. Principal Satterfield, although they're scattered into the three separate locations right now, is looking forward to and making lemonade. He said, we get to have two first days of school this year. So they're celebrating that at Brown. Principal Murphy, talking about lots of smiling faces out back, reinforcing their motto of keep, keep each other well. And then she said they had some really brave fourth grade poets who shared a little bit about themselves. So that's nice to hear from Village. Principal Fox at Vets went very well. He's celebrating the positive energy of the seventh graders and the group of leaders that he has in the eighth grade. Principal Bauer talked about, and I really think that this is a nice Marblehead tradition of that first day of school of allowing or permitting or establishing the freshman class in the building first to get their bearings and that cheer thing that could go in two different directions went very, very well. So I applaud Principal Bauer for kind of laying the foundation there for our seniors, for showing great leadership in welcoming the freshmen. And that's the opening update. If you have any questions about the opening, I'll take them now or I'll just move forward expeditiously and talk about some of our outreach efforts for the year.
Sarah?
Um, so being spread all over a million different buildings with my kids, I can say I witnessed that things, things went really well. A lot of happy faces, a lot of energized adults and kids.
Um, so being spread all over a million different buildings with my kids, I can say I witnessed that things, things went really well. A lot of, um, happy faces, a lot of energized adults and kids. One of the questions I heard, um, from parents at pickup in, in different places, at all the different buildings I was at, was a concern about lunch. Um, and I think some of the, now that the tents are here, I think a lot of this is maybe fleshing itself out. But could you take a minute and just talk about, um, will lunch be, obviously weather dependent, be outside at all of our buildings? Because I, I think that that was the understanding of a lot of parents. Um, and there, there seems to be some confusion right now. So I think if we could give some clarification on that, that would be helpful.
Sure. We are prioritizing outdoor classroom space and lunch space as much as possible. But I have left it to each building to, uh, manage lunch in ways that make sense for that building. I was talking to Principal Oda today. He actually walked me up to the cafeteria and showed me the spacing. They've marked off seats where students can seat and he was actually celebrating how well lunch is going, uh, at Glover. But I think if parents have concerns about lunch periods at an individual building, I would reach out to that building principal for clarification.
Emily.
Just real quick, um, I saw in Millie's Metco update that Marblehead had every school leader there. And I was so impressed. So thank you for making that happen and for supporting the program.
It was a lot of fun. They had a DJ there. They had ice cream. Uh, there were probably seven, eight, 10, uh, different Metgo districts. And certainly we were the largest representation. And so Millie got her group and got that picture for us.
Great. And I will definitely second, um, you know, as the parent of a newly minted freshman over at the high school that, that them being able to go in and they had their orientation last week. So they kind of got two shots at, um, you know, going around the school, getting tours, understanding where their classes are, um, before being tossed in with the rest of the kids who are old hat at this stuff. So it, I think that you're absolutely right. It's a, it's a great way to, to help out the freshmen to sort of get their bearings and, and feel more confident. All right, David, you're not on my screen. Did you have anything to, so I can't see if your, uh, hand is raised.
I'm not on your screen.
All right, John.
Am I good? Can anybody else see me?
I don't know if anybody's got you on your screen. All right. So somebody give me a heads up of David that raises his hand. Thanks. Did you have anything to say, David?
I, I do. I just wanted to say, you know, it was, it was really fun to be at Crocker Park at 6:00 AM, walking my dog Mogul and hearing the horns, uh, beeping for all of the, uh, seniors driving throughout town. And it's been a tradition that, uh, not only my son participated in, but I've, and it kind of reminded me that morning of, um, you know, school's starting. It's, it's like the church bells ringing and, uh, it went on for, for quite a few, probably until 6:15, 6:20. And, and it's a, it's a neat tradition. And then as has been described, having the tradition to allow the freshmen to come into school. And I think it's pretty special and it's great to have everybody back in school.
Yeah, you're right, David. I was hearing the same things and it made me a little teary eyed, just that sort of the normalcy that is returning and, and just really happy that, that we're kind of getting back to that point. Megan?
It was nice because those horns, uh, woke my children up instead of me having to. So I love that tradition, you know, it's new to me, um, you know, before I came to Marblehead. So I think it's a really great tradition. So nice work, everyone. Getting it off to a good start.
Go ahead, John.
So another, uh, piece of returning to a sense of normalcy, one of the things that I would have liked to have done last year is to do more community outreach in terms of superintendent coffees. And this is probably something I talked about during the interview process that we weren't able to do last year. But each month this year, I'd like to hold an informal opportunity to connect with members of the community that they might be topical if it's budget related. But not just, we need to have a meeting or a forum because, but these more informal opportunities to sit down with the superintendent, hear what's happening in the district. To bring questions where there can be more dialogue and discourse, uh, around things impacting the district. I'd hope to rotate locations, um, you know, uh, go to the Brown School, the Glover School, Village. Um, and those will be starting, uh, this month and that will be in my superintendent goals as well. But I think this will be a welcome opportunity for the community, not to need to request an opportunity for a forum on something. But to know that each month there would be an opportunity for an informal gathering with superintendent.
John, if you put those on this, the website, uh, the calendar on the school committee website, I think it will be part of the push notifications as well that people get, which would be, I think, really welcome.
That's great. I will absolutely do that.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. And, uh, we're going to figure out with the new website, how we're transitioning, um, over to the new website with our school committee staff. And, and Stephen's been working hard on that. So maybe we can even get that, you know, in the banner that week or something, um, you know, so that it's really highlighted as well as in those push notifications.
Next we have our busing update and I will say, uh, that if you've watched the news, busing shortages, bus driver shortages is everywhere. And I don't think it is a fair assessment two days in to say we have excess capacity on our buses. Um, I think once we have a full, first full week of school, we can make, uh, that determination. The rollout of busing, not great. Um, but Michelle will give an update on some of the things, uh, that we have in terms of eligible riders. We are certainly not in a place where I would open it up, uh, to seven through 12. Um, right now our K to six numbers and our ability to bus the eligible riders, uh, exceeds our capacity. And we have to assume that if they are eligible to ride, we can't turn them away. So filling the buses with paying students at this point isn't a lever that I am able to pull. But I'll dish to Michelle to talk about busing and where we are.
Great. Thank you. Um, yes. So with the start of any school year, we have, um, typically you experience some bumps in the road per se, and we certainly have this year as well. Um, late last week, we realized some of the calculations for our village students were coming up incorrectly in Google Maps, which is the basis for our distance calculations. Going to Village, it adds point seven tenths of a mile to the route, which is significant when you're looking at a distance of two miles. But going home, if you did the calculation from the village school to the student's home address, it did not include that point seven tenth of a mile. Which basically brings, um, the students around the back of the village school and adds to that distance. So according to the guidelines, we are looking at the shortest distance between school and home. So we transport students who are two or more miles away from their homeschool. Late last week, we realized there was this glitch in the calculations, which caused some last minute disruptions, certainly to families, not anything that we wanted to send out, nor did we want the families to experience that. We tried the best we can, but, um, in being limited with our capacity, we did have to turn some students away. Who initially we thought were over two miles, roughly 2.6, 2.7 miles. And really, they, really they ended up at 1.9 miles, 1.8 miles away from their homeschool. As Dr. Bucky mentioned, we, um, have a significant demand for busing at this time. To date, we have identified 216 eligible riders who are two or more miles from their homeschool. We have 99 registered riders so far. Um, at this point, we do not know if the students riding the bus are actually 100% registered. We are in the process of verifying those lists, it'll only be the second day of school. We have opened the Peter Ride Pilot Program with eight seats initially. Primarily most of the seats are on that bus three run, which is in Old Town or downtown area of the school. And, um, we currently have a waitlist of 39 additional students, um, that we have not been able to secure a seat yet. Initially, the first day we had roughly 22 people on, on that list and now it has increased to 39. So right now we are using, um, a total of two buses. One bus is covering bus routes one and two. And the second bus is covering bus route three. We are finding that, um, bus row route. One in the Tedesco section of town is actually at capacity. We currently have roughly, um, 66 students riding that bus with three students to a seat. Um, ideally not what we want. However, we do have the smaller children on that bus because we're not busing the middle school, high school. So we are able to get students to a seat. There are no COVID restrictions in terms of how many students we can seat or fit on the bus. Other than the safety guidelines of how many seats the bus actually provides. So, um, we are looking at possibly reworking a little bit of how we manage these three bus runs with the currently two buses that we have. Still attract, trying to attract additional drivers, um, without a driver, we are not able to put the third bus into, um, service at this time. So we, we are having, we have currently two other employees who are trying to go through the licensure process. Um, we're not sure how quickly that will be, you know, through or whatnot or, um, finalized, but we do have that. We are also talking to possibly two potential other people who have shown interest. However, they have not seemed very responsive after our initial conversation. So I'm not sure, we didn't even get to the point where we're talking salary yet. So, um, that certainly is, is not the hindrance at this point. Um, but we are, we're trying to attract drivers, trying to add, add additional buses. So we can add additional capacity. Um, the parents that I have talked to have given us constructive criticism in terms of some of the emails that went out. It didn't specify which of the students in their household was eligible for the bus and which one was not. Because some households, you have students attending Coffin and Village. In certain instances, only the Coffin student would be eligible and the Village students are not. So there's been some confusion there. Hoping to increase our communication in terms of, you know, clarifying which students are eligible. But we are responding to the emails. It's been an extremely busy two days. We do expect the ridership to increase over the next week or so. Typically the first 10 days of school. You find not all students are riding, but eventually they do plan to ride. So we do not think we're at our capacity of where our ridership is going to be for the coming months. I think that is about it for right now, but as I mentioned, right now, bus one or one of our buses is doing routes one and two. The second bus is doing route three. We're trying to reconfigure that in the next coming days, which may change our bus routes and our bus times a bit. And we will continue to send that out, um, to families that are registered for the bus and we will post any changes on the website as well. So the bus routes are, um, something that we keep tweaking and that's typical. Um, until the first three to four weeks of school, you will continually see those updates. And I did just want to mention that, um, we do not put times on our specific stops. We put a start time and usually an end time on each of our bus routes. But usually there's a 10 to 15 minute window around any particular bus stop. So we, we try not to put specific times on there because then if we had in a 7:45 bus stop time, parents will say, well, I was there by 7:45. Well, the bus ended up coming at 7:40 that day. So it raises the anxiety for children who missed bus stops because we put specific times on there. So really we want parents to, um, encourage their students to be at the stops early and, um, be, be prepared to jump on that bus at any time. You know, a few minutes after that stops, that route starts. And once we get a better handle on our routes and whatnot, things will start to settle out in the next week or so. Anyone has any questions regarding any of the busing information?
Thanks for that update, Michelle. Uh, Megan?
Um, so Michelle, thanks for the update. It answered a few of the questions I had already jotted down. So I appreciate all the information. You mentioned that you would expect kind of ridership to settle out after about 10 days. So in terms of, um, the students and families that are on the waitlist, when approximately do you have a feel for when they might get some clarification or update?
That I'm not really sure. Um, we do expect the ridership to settle down in the coming weeks. However, we do have the obligation, if a family is eligible or a student is eligible for transportation. At any point in this, during the school year, they can then choose to start using transportation and we have to guarantee them a seat on the bus. So that is, is part of the difficulty here where we are at capacity. I mean, as I mentioned, we have, um, 219 riders that are eligible for the bus. And currently the two buses we have hold 66 students each. So we do not even have the current capacity with the drivers we have to bus all of those students. So right now we are busing, you know, according to the registrations, we are busing 107 students. So that leaves just a teeny bit of capacity with those 66 seats. And in looking at the breakdown between the routes and the buses, it doesn't leave a lot of flexibility. I'm hoping that in the future we can actually secure some drivers and therefore deploy some more buses. Because we do have four full buses that we could use on these routes. We just need the drivers.
Okay. So the drivers will kind of be the, be the variable we need to fill. Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. And then I don't want to open up a whole can of worms at this point, but just thinking about once Brown opens, how that changes.
Um, it doesn't change too much because the students who are eligible for Brown transportation, we already have those, those families, our students in the mix. They're already counted. So actually our ridership will go down about five eligible riders once Brown opens.
Okay. Okay. I think that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands up, Michelle.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up on the agenda, we have the, uh, COVID contact tracing. Uh, when last Deanna presented, uh, she talked to you about the symptomatic testing, the test and stay and the routine COVID safety checks. She talked about close contacts and quarantine and everybody's eyes crossed and it was way too much information. And so we said we would bring Deanna back. Clearly you were not alone in that assertion because, uh, Desi did produce some flow charts. Some visuals for each of the COVID scenarios. And I could click on this, uh, and it will take you to the Desi document and you can see that it goes through the protocols that she outlined for you. Symptomatic, um, individual districts are taking these and kind of nuancing them to their particular. And I know Deanna likes, uh, the dusty flow charts because they work within the program that we have here. The next step, and it will be in the Friday update, is getting everyone to indicate participation. And it is, you're going to participate or not participate. It isn't a kind of buffet. Well, I'll do the symptomatic COVID testing, but I don't want to do the COVID safety checks. And so I will turn it over to Deanna to, uh, answer any questions that the committee might have or any clarifications that she's had since, uh, our last meeting.
Deanna, anything that you wanted to add before I ask for questions?
Uh, I just wanted to add that one of the biggest pieces that we need to understand is that this is like, this whole test and stay and symptomatic testing is really like, we're trying to create Marblehead Public Schools as its own kind of bubble system. So this is used as a protect, protector might not be the right word, but, but I want people to understand this is used so that we can keep kids in school and we can be at school. And we can manage those kids that might end up being a contact while at school and keep them in school. And/or if during the school day someone became symptomatic, we could test them and then send them home. This is meant for Marblehead Public Schools specifically. And when we fall on the weekend and someone might be in an activity on the weekend. We would have arrangements for them to test and stay for that specific activity for the school bubble, because they're at a school activity. But beyond that activity, they would still be required to quarantine at home when they were not at that school activity, when school is not happening. So it's, it's really like a bubble. I think that's the best way to describe it. We're doing this for the best of the school. Because if we do really well in school, we'll be helping the community at large. But this is not making Marblehead Public Schools a testing location. This is not saying that when you're not in a school activity, you don't have to quarantine because you will need to quarantine unless you fall into one of the exemptions that is clearly stated. And if you have any questions, you can call your school nurse because I'm making sure that we are all going to consistently give you all the same information. So that you could talk to me, you could talk to Deb Cullen, you could talk to Amanda Marrows and you'll get the same story. That is my dream and that's what I'm going to work on.
Thank you, Deanna. I just want to. Thank you, Deanna. I just want to jump in there. When she was talking about activities, one of the questions that you had posed is if a student is a student athlete and there's a competition on the weekend, we're hoping to get the coaches or athletic trainer or the athletic director to be able to do, continue that test and stay that if they had been doing it during the week and there's the soccer game on Saturday, that that coach would be able to do that by next now test on that Saturday rather than the student athlete having to miss that. Or if there was a musical that afternoon or something like that, it's not outside of school activities.
Right, and they can be and go and be in that activity, but then they need to go back into quarantine as soon as that activity is over. That doesn't give them a free opening to go to a birthday party or whatever other activities. It's that bubble of that's a school activity. That's the definition.
Megan, I see your hand up.
So I'm sure, Deanna, that you went through this last time, so I apologize. But can you just clarify the contact tracing and how you coordinate with the town? Right? Because something might happen outside of school. So how does that coordination and collaboration work?
So if something happens outside of school, like right now, we do have several people that are in a quarantine situation and or an isolation situation that may have happened before school started, but that time of isolation or quarantine ran into school start. So for that, I speak to the Board of Health. None of those situations were were in school exposures. So that's why none of that is falling into any of this flow chart that you're seeing or any of the protocols that I discussed at that last school committee meeting or we could go Tuesday. That's what the difference is. Am I answering your question?
Kind of. Yes, you are. It's just do I, you know, I'm trying to kind of watch, think of a scenario to walk through. But in that case, then that student is just quarantining at home.
Correct. You're you're still, if you are a vaccinated individual in Marblehead, so if you are a staff person or you are a child over the age of twelve and you've been vaccinated and you're exposed to COVID nineteen out in the world, you still are exempt from quarantine as long as you remain asymptomatic. But I'm still going to hear about you because I'm going to talk to the Board of Health and I'm going to find out that you were identified as a close contact or identified as a positive. And I'd also like your family to reach out and tell us that, too. Because even if you're vaccinated, you still need to monitor for symptoms in those fourteen days. If you are not vaccinated and your activity, you get you expose yourself outside of school, you're going to follow all the protocols we followed last year. You're still going to fully quarantine. You're not going to come to school. We are not tested staying with you because it wasn't an in-school activity that exposed you. Is that helping?
Yep. But then for the cases where maybe you don't know where you got exposed, but you come into school, you don't feel well midday, then they follow the test and stay process.
They wouldn't do test and stay because again, they weren't exposed in school that we knew about, like they were, they were not identified as a close contact. But if I had a student come in and wasn't feeling well in any of the buildings, we have a student come in halfway through the day, they're not feeling well. So in the morning, one important piece is they've passed the health attestation. We still need everyone to look at that health attestation each day, staff or student. If in the first like twenty minutes of school, we're probably just going to dismiss those kids because they really may not have passed the health attestation. But if you're talking about, I don't know, an hour or two into school, they're not feeling well, they come to the nurse's office, we take their temperature, they have a fever, that is one of the top bolded on the on the student health attestation. That is one of the top bolded symptoms that we're looking at. And so then we would do a by next now test on that student. If that student tested positive and we really didn't know where their exposure came, they would be dismissed from school and their family would be handling their COVID situation outside of school. That would not be a test and stay. That would not be. Do you understand?
So the only test and stays if someone gets it from like if someone tests positive after they were identified as being a close contact at school.
Your test and staying is if you have been contact traced in one of the buildings, you are automatically eligible for test and say as long as you consented. So if you, I mean, that would be the same thing if we were to have like a team exposure because that's a school activity. But if you just had symptoms and we couldn't say, because it's so hard, you know, I could be completely asymptomatic and give it to somebody and never knew I even had it, and it could have technically fallen under the schools, you know, realm, but I didn't and wasn't on a contact list, so I wouldn't be tested staying. You'll only be eligible for test and stay if you consent and if your actual exposure has been identified as an in-school exposure, whether you're a staff person or you're a student.
Okay, that is exactly what I, that's now it's clear. There's that gray area, and that's the piece I was trying to get to. So that I think a hundred percent clears it up.
And on the fact, on the frequently asked questions for August twentieth, item number eight, Desi states that we will not be tested staying anyone who's exposed outside of school. This is not, this is really a system for us to maintain in the schools.
And you don't get to stay if you're positive?
Yes.
Right.
No one stays if they're positive. Anyone who's positive goes home for ten days.
Understood.
Okay, all right.
If I misspoke, I'm glad you clarified. Thank you.
So not to oversimplify, but test to stay is kind of like, I would say, if in doubt, you're not part of the program, like you'll know if you're part of test and stay because you will have been contacted by one of our nurses via a call, an email, a letter told of your exposure and told you can partake in test and stay. Like if you're not told you you qualify for it, your exposure doesn't count towards it.
It's like. Correct. Because you will have been identified as a close contact, and if we know that you've consented, because like Dr. Bucky alluded to earlier, this consent is we want you to consent, yes, you'll participate, and we also want you to consent, no, you will not participate. So for those people that consent to participate, they will be identified as close contacts, that they were exposed, especially if we end up going to a time when we don't have masks on all of our kids, and those kids will know that they're engaged in test and stay because it's five consecutive days. And then if it falls on the weekend and they have an activity, we need to specifically make arrangements for that test and stay, or they won't be eligible to be at that activity.
Yeah, so to save our nurses four hundred phone calls, if you were, if you were a family and you were not asked to be part of test and stay because of your exposure at school, you are not part of test and stay.
Exactly.
Don't call the nurse and ask.
I think if we put it in, if we put it in terms of last year, if we think about the letters that would go home, that that there was a positive, I think what this does is because we've decreased our six feet distance, this then obviously we're going to have far more content, close contacts. So this allows for those close contacts that might have occurred at school to test and stay so long as they're negative. I think that's sort of the piece that we can't, we can only control so much for people being exposed outside and coming in and then presenting with symptoms at some point during the day. And this then sort of what we're seeing, as I'm starting to read articles, you know, from all over the country, what we're seeing in other parts of the country where they don't have a test and stay piece happening in their districts or their states is that you've got thousands of kids out in quarantine because they were exposed at school. So this is taking that piece out of out of the picture for Massachusetts schools who are participating in that because they can, we we are being given the opportunity to test and stay should, you know, each individual parent decide that that's right for their family.
Yes, and that's what we're controlling in the school because we're keeping it in that bubble type system. And you also don't want to forget that there are people that are exempt from test and stay. If you're fully vaccinated and you're asymptomatic, you don't test and stay. If you're classroom contact, both, you know, three feet or greater in distance with two masks on, you don't test and stay. If you're a bus contact, masks on, windows open, you don't test and stay. And if you've had COVID in the past ninety days, you don't test and stay.
And I think it's important to note, you just stay. You don't go out on quarantine, you just stay.
Unless you become symptomatic. That's it. Yes. Sorry.
So the consent piece, I think we talked about this in our last meeting, but can you just clarify how we're going, you know, how parents can go through that consent process and the notification they're going to get around that and when?
It is on the homepage of every school webpage. It's on the district homepage. It will go out in my weekly updates, and principals will be sending it out in their updates. The link for, and I think Sarah did it today for her own student.
I did. I actually got it because Tower is participating in test and stay as well, as well as the, what are we calling the?
Random COVID safety checks.
Yeah, the random COVID safety checks. And so I went on and I clicked on it, and it takes you now to, you know, whereas last year we were, we were assigned a testing site and they kind of managed it. Now it's one testing site for any school who's in it. And so as I was scrolling through looking for Tower, I came across Marblehead. So I filled it out for myself at Tower, and then I went back in and filled it out for my two students. And it's really simple. It takes you straight to the the one page. You you put, as a parent, you put your information in, and then you put your student's information in and what school they're at and how old they are. And then at the bottom of it, it has two boxes. One says, yes, I consent. If you click, yes, I consent, it drops down and gives you further consent language, at the bottom of which there's a little touchscreen that you sign your name, put the date and submit. If you up at that, yes, you don't want to participate, you, and then this is, they they lump them together. So you're either in and participating in test and stay as well as the random COVID safety checks, or you're out and not participating in both of them. And and if you check no, I don't want to consent, then you just check no, nothing else pops down and you submit. So it took a couple of minutes, was was very easy, very simple, probably even more simple than the beacon testing one that from last spring, and that was it, and done and done.
So if you don't want. Also another category, though, I just don't want you to forget, there's also if you do consent, your child will then also be eligible for by next now for symptomatic testing at school.
Yes, thank you.
So you can't say, I don't want to pull tests and I don't want to do by next now, but if they're exposed, I'm going to test and stay. It's it's an all or none. Which I think helpful for just carrying through information and everything.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
So so that concludes the superintendent's update, and I just want to make the offer to any of the administrators that are on the call, having been a building principal, knowing how much goes into opening day and the opening week, to give them the opportunity to log off at this point at eight thirty on at the end of two very long days, and thank you.
Thank you to all of them, and thank you, Deanna, as well. Sarah, did you have something?
Deanna, that flow chart, can we make sure that that's on our website somewhere so that people can facilitate getting their own? I'm just trying to limit the number of times our nurses get a phone call for a question that people can kind of answer themselves if they look online.
I do want to put it on the flow chart. I just want to tweak a little of it because when you look at Protocol B under category B one, there's a small note that talks about weekend tests, e-med take-home tests. We're not going to use that. We're going to look at the little different nuance. You and I spoke about it. So I'm just going to change that, and then we will get it up for sure.
And when you do that, can you send that to me and I'll get it to Emily, and we'll put it on to the school committee website as well? Because that we do still have that functioning while we're kind of switching over completely to the new school website. So we'll make sure that it's in as many places as possible.
Great, sure.
Thanks, Deanna. All right, that is the end of John's report. Michelle, that brings us up to finance and organizational support again, and a quick COVID expenditures update.
Yes, thank you. At our next or at your next school committee meeting, you will have your monthly financial update, which will also include a detailed financial report for our COVID funds and expenditures. I do have a reporting period due to the state later this week, I believe it's on a Saturday, which I don't know why they would pick a Saturday, but I will probably be doing it on Saturday. So I did want to mention that all of the COVID funds that we have received, which total roughly two point three million have been fully expended or have been committed. There's just a little bit more that where the invoices are still coming in, but that has been fully spent. The last portion of our COVID funding that we have coming up is the SR three grant, which we have been talking about earlier this summer, and that is in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand. The due date for that grant, I believe, is October fourth. It's early October either way. And the next step in order to secure that grant is to get a survey of the stakeholders. So I will be sending out a survey in the coming weeks to parents and to staff and to figure out, you know, what is the best use of these SR three funds? There are certain areas that we absolutely will have to cover. For example, the tents that went up this week. There was no additional COVID funding from the previous grants available to cover that. So this this new tent cost will be covered by the SR three grant. Our additional nurse for our random COVID safety checks will also be coming out of this SR three grant. We will also provide some mental health supports for students and any additional air purifiers that we need to purchase. So those are a few of the areas that we'll be using these grant funds for, but with a price tag of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, or rather, that those funds coming to us, we have a substantial pot of money and we need to figure out how to best use those funds. So, you know, by the end of the month, we will have that detailed report of what we have spent the existing funds on, and hopefully by that time we'll have a better idea of what we will be asking for in terms of that grant funding and and that grant budget. But no real specific numbers at this time, but if you have any, committee has any questions about that, you know, that that limited information, please let me know.
Megan, I see your unmuted.
Yeah, I would definitely like us to review the priorities for that funding before we spend anything. I think, you know, it's important that we all know exactly how we're going to spend any further funding, you know, for COVID relief stuff, especially as we move into this year. So I do definitely want to review those priorities, please.
Yes, we can certainly do that at the next meeting before the application actually goes up.
Thank you.
Do we know how long we have the tents through?
I don't know off the top of my head. I believe they're currently contracted through mid to late October.
No problem. And if you if you look and see tomorrow that it's different, just you know how to find me.
Absolutely. But no, it's sometime in October, right, or off the top of my head. But we've been dealing with the same company for the tents since the very beginning, and they have been wonderful and bending over backwards to meet our needs. So they have been great.
Nan is shaking her head to the to the October date, so I think that's a good one. Anybody else? All right, thanks, Michelle. Oh, David, go ahead.
So, Michelle, can you talk about the local fiscal recovery funds? There's so many different acronyms, but I think it's also known as.
Yes, ARPA funds. There is, actually, John has been in discussions with Jason about that. There have been a couple of meetings. The town did put out some draft guidelines on what those funds will be used for. I did review those, but I do not know if there are any specific plans about when those will be utilized or when they will be coming at this point. Dr. Bucky may have more information in terms of those funds.
No, I did meet with some town stakeholders, and they reviewed the priorities for the ARPA funds and what they could be used for. And then they put together a draft of how Marblehead wanted to see those priorities. And then once those priorities, like the buckets, I guess, is what you would call them under or within each of those possible things to expend the money on. And so that once the priorities are set, they will determine how in each of those priority categories they want to spend the funds.
Right. But we're talking about six, six million dollars, six point one million dollars for Marblehead. And I'm just interested in knowing where do the schools stand?
I will say that that is one thing that I said, the school committee will ask me, where do the schools fit into this? And I will say, David, it sounds like a huge sum of money, and it is a huge sum of money. But as you have different stakeholders gathered around the table and talk about infrastructure projects or some things, the money goes very, very quickly.
We can sort this. Take this offline, but I I understand there's been some, you know, changes in the finance committee where members are not, you know, the the chair and vice chair are not continuing. And so I'd like to just understand who makes the decision on how that six point one million dollars is going to be spent? I mean, I I think when we first, and once again, not knowing the the acronyms correctly, but Michelle, help me out here, when we when we first came into COVID and there was the one point, I'll call it the one point eight million dollar fund, and it was agreed that the town would spend. And it was agreed that the town would spend, I don't know, a million of it, and the schools were going to spend 8 million. And now we are here, we, and then there was, now we're at $6.1 million of funds and we don't know if the schools are eligible for any of that $6.1 million from a priority standpoint? I mean, we, we certainly have a lot of priorities. And I, and I don't think that the town is would ignore those. And I just want to understand where that $6 million is going to go and, and when we're going to start talking about it.
Certainly, the schools are eligible and are part of the conversation. I'm just calling up the email. The five priority areas are expenses for ongoing COVID-19 public health and safety, replenishing reserves, economic recovery programs and initiatives, investments in infrastructure, and temporary operating deficits caused by COVID-19. There are no subcategories under that, that this town department is going to have this funded. The conversation has got, not gotten that granular yet.
Sarah?
So
Well, Sarah, just one second. So if you go, and if I could, and this is part of, I had asked the question, if you go to the Massachusetts website that lists the available funds, and the way I read it, it shows that $1,075,000 has already been paid to date of the $6.144,000. So have we spent some of that $6 million or, you know, and Michelle, help me out. I'm looking at the spreadsheet. So the number is $6,144,000. And it says, whole total paid to date is $1,075,000.
Yes, I am aware.
Money has been spent from this fund and none of it has been spent by the schools?
I'm not sure if the towns have actually spent any of the funds. They have received an initial allotment, I believe about a month ago, the initial payments did go out. It is going directly to the town. So, and they were very generous with us with the last, you know, grouping of the coronavirus relief fund that came out last year, where they did allot us about a million dollars, but there has been no specific discussion or dollar amounts, you know, granted towards the school department specifically.
That's concerning to me. I mean, I, I think we need to, I know you've had discussions, Dr. Bucky, and I, I respect that and I respect, you know, town administrator Jason Silva hadn't had a chance. I know he's been very busy in the last couple, couple of months as well. But I think we need to figure this out. Because we have infrastructure needs as well. I mean, certainly falls under HVAC systems and other various improvements. And, you know, we certainly have things that are ongoing with, with the coronavirus and, and expenses that I think we need to start talking about. And I'd like to see whether it's, you know, the subcommittee is Megan and myself and Michelle that, and then we, whoever is left on the finance committee, I think, is it Emily? That might now be the de facto chair that we start talking about this and figure out where these monies are going.
Just, I think that's a good idea, David. Maybe we could have a budget subcommittee meeting, or I could invite Jason to come to a school committee meeting and give an overview.
Yep.
I don't, I don't, you know, have much to say other than this is clearly the purview of the, of, of the town and the selectmen. And while I think it goes without saying that I always feel strongly that the schools should be getting, you know, more financial support than we've been getting. I don't, I mean, it, this is the, us saying what they should do with their money is the equivalent of them telling us how to, how to plan our budget, which I've never, you know, agreed with. So, so, I mean, that's for them to do and it's, it's for us to identify what our needs are. And so we, if we have needs, we need to make a list of what our needs are and then go to the town and say, these are our needs that aren't being met. I don't, I think, I think we need to move past the point of where we say, how much money can you give us? And we need to instead start saying, we have these needs. We can't fund them under our current financial streams and this is what we need from you. And I think that's always been, you know, what we should be doing. It's, you know, goes along with the idea of the zero-based budget. Asking what you're going to give us and then backing into it has never worked for us. What we need to start doing is we have these needs. They're either being met, they're not being met, and we need to, to get them met. I mean, David, you can agree on how we, how we ask for money or don't ask for money, but that's my point of view is we need to articulate, if we have needs that aren't being met because of COVID, we need to come up with a list and we need to put it forth. But we can't just say, how much are you going to give us? We need to, we need a well-defined list.
Sarah, I'm not asking how much money the town is going to give us. I, I want to be, I want to be a player in the conversation of how the money's going to be spent. That's all I'm saying. And I think we haven't even started. That, that's all I'm saying. And we need, to your point, we need to define what it is. And we need to be a player at the table. And it's municipal funds, but I don't think it, municipal funds are town and schools. I mean, Chapter 90 is technically, you know, school funds, but we, it's municipal funds, the way we put in, you know, that we've worked. We've always worked collaboratively together, and I'm not trying to put a wedge there. We've worked collaboratively here. And if you look at the definition of these funds, it doesn't say that it's municipal funds. And I think we should be at the table with, with this money and how it's going to be spent. And to your point, let's start defining what, what our needs are. I'm not asking for, are we going to get 3 million of it or, or 1 million of it? I just want to be part of the discussion as we go forward. And we, and we haven't had that discussion. It's a lot of money. It's $6 million. Let's be real about it. $6 million and we haven't even talked about it. And
We have to give them a list of what
By the spreadsheet, it shows that $1 million has already been allocated to the town. What is that? What has it been spent for? I don't know what the million dollars has been spent for. Hasn't been written about in the papers. And I want to know, and it's, it's funds that are available to this town. And as, I think it's our duty to ask what's going on with this money. It's a lot of money and that money could be spent on HVAC systems and improvements that we need in our facilities or ventilation, whatever it might be that we identified, but I think we need to start having these discussions. And I just wanted to bring that up as part of this budget update and hopefully we can find a way to talk about it.
So it, it sounds like in addition to the budget subcommittee, that we need the facilities subcommittee to meet as well, to start looking at that facilities overview that we got and
Absolutely.
Seeing, you know, what, what in there can be put towards, you know, can, can be addressed with COVID funds and what can't? And then put that forward as well.
I, I think my point of view for the COVID money is always, did COVID cause this problem? And if it did, those funds should be used for it. If the cause of the problem is deferred maintenance, then is it, is it proper for us to ask for COVID money to pay for deferred maintenance? So that's, I think, more of a theoretical question. We have to decide as a group what we're comfortable with. But, but we definitely have facilities asked. My point is, moving forward, I, I think at all times, we need to have a list of exactly what needs we have, spell them out. If they're COVID needs and it should be COVID relief money, we spell it out and we ask. To my knowledge, it's not that we've gone to the town and said, we have this need, and they said, no. We, we, we need to be accountable and ask for what we need. And, and that's, I think, we just haven't, we haven't done the zero-based budget yet.
Well, I think that I, I would, go ahead, David.
The politicians at the federal level granted $2 billion to the state of Massachusetts. Without any identified need, there was a formula. And the state of Massachusetts received $2 billion. And people can go out and see the spreadsheet and it was what, five months ago, we received notification that out of the, the $2 billion, $49 million that Marblehead was going to get $6 million. Whether we needed it or not, there was, there was a decision that was made at an upper level that coronavirus needs or not, Sarah, no needs had been identified at all. There was a formula based on population and whatever it was, and the money showed up. So I'd like to understand how this money can be spent based on what I know. But we have paid full-time professionals working in the town that understand this better, but there hasn't been clarification on this money. And it certainly wasn't that we needed to identify it first and then the money was granted to us. It just showed up as, as, as a grant five, four or five months ago. And we need to start talking about the $6.1 million. And because it, we all know from a budget standpoint, that's a lot of money for Marblehead. And it will have a significant impact, whether it's for the schools or the town, and we need to be part of that discussion.
And I mean, we're not the only school district that has deferred maintenance. I mean, we saw last year, schools unable to open their doors and keep, they needed to keep kids remote, not in our district, but in districts all over the Commonwealth because they didn't have functioning windows. So, you know, that money would easily be put towards stuff like that. Whereas COVID didn't cause the non-functioning windows, but it is creating a barrier to education within COVID. And so how, you know, what, what things, you know, in that vein, what things do Marblehead have? And some, and some of those, I have to assume, you know, like technology, are identified on this facilities audit. And so how can we better serve our students so that in this situation, they are getting the best education that we can put forward by using these funds? That's kind of how I wrap my head around, you know, this next step.
I don't disagree. We need money. What I'm saying is we need a list of what we need. We can't just say, how much are we getting of the $6.1 million? Let me know. We need, we need a bullet, like, we need an itemized spreadsheet list request that we then bring forth and say, this is what we need. And then, then people have to say yes or no. But we need to, we need to do the work first. We need to identify what our needs are. We, we can't just say, how much are we getting?
So I kind of think you're all saying the same thing, and I agree. We need to get involved in this conversation. So, John, I know you and Michelle are already working with the town, and I don't want to kind of confuse that piece, but I think it might be worthwhile to have a budget subcommittee meeting and start to outline what those are. And also, whether we bring Jason into that or a school committee, I don't, you know, it's fine either way. But just again, so we're part of that collaborative conversation as well. But yeah, I mean, we should absolutely get moving on this from a, from a school committee perspective.
Yeah, and I think, I think again, I'll restate it, that the facility subcommittee too. You know, there's, I think, those two things, and I made this case at the, at the retreat, those two things are working in conjunction with each other because we know that those, that, the facility piece is where our biggest issues lie right now and are especially our biggest long-term things. That, that, you know, those two subcommittees need to, you know, and, and, you know, the professionals that we have on, on both of them overlap. And so they really need to be working together right now. And, you know, obviously we can't meet together because that's a quorum, but in as much as they can. All right, that leads us on to our schedules. Thank you, Michelle, for the update. And you had the schedules in a packet in the Google Drive. And so can I get a motion to approve the identified schedule to bill totaling $3,957,660.55? Megan moved.
Seconded, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah. Second. Any questions? All right, Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yeah.
Emily Baron?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to zero. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay, so that leads us on to school communi, school committee communication and discussion items. I put first up on there, the school community, committee communication and outreach, similarly to the superintendent's outreach piece. I wanted to bring that around. Sarah, you had requested, you know, that this, that the idea of forums come back onto an agenda. John's idea with the coffees, I think, is a good one, and I wanted to bring that around. I know, you know, we've discussed in previous years, I think it came up as one of the options last year in how the school committee can be more involved in, you know, not just the school, but within the community, this idea of office hours. We've talked about it quite a few times, never actually followed through on it. COVID has inhibited it for sure. And I wanted to bring it back up tonight, particularly given that the superintendent is going to be doing his coffees. You know, do we want to go along with him and be a part of that? Or do we want to hold our own office hours? And, you know, would we want one committee member or two committee members on that? I wanted to open it up for discussion this evening. Sarah?
We can have two. It would need to be a posted meeting then, as a subcommittee. More than one discussing anything under our purview would, it would violate open meeting law. So it would have to be one, but I kind of feel like that's just part of being a school committee member anyway. I know that any, anybody that wants to speak to me can call me or speak to me at any, anytime. I don't need to be having office hours. They literally can just reach out to me at any time. So I don't, like, I feel like office hours in a way limits it. I'm not opposed to doing it. I just feel like it's part of our job to make ourselves available, you know, within reason at any time that the community wants to talk to us. I do feel strongly that we should be having at least three forums a year with the full school committee, where, you know, it's maybe topic-specific, but we enter into an actual, you know, dialogue, like with, with the community. They've said they wanted it. It was done in the past. It was done extremely successfully in the past. Even on very hot-button issues, things stayed very civil. They went really well. I attended all the ones in the past. And I think that we've been away from it for too long and we need to go back to it.
Megan, did you want to say something?
My recollection of those forums were that they were superintendent-led, am I, at least the ones I attended.
The school committee was there, though.
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to that. I just think like, when you get into a public forum like that, it needs to include the superintendent, at least from an administrative standpoint.
Yeah, I think we all would be there and it would just literally be the, a conversation, a public conversation on, on a specific topic, whether it's going to be special education or busing or, or whatever the topic may be, but it's a conversation. And they happen, you know, not every week because our meetings are to get business done, but they would happen periodically.
David, you're unmuted. Did you want to say something?
No.
I, I would, I first I'd push back on the two-person thing because the, it's, if it's not a designated subcommittee, which it wouldn't be, it would just be a coffee that would be rotational. It's not a quorum of the school committee. And so, and no one is making any kind of commitments at any of those things. It's, it's just a conversation with the public. And I don't know, I guess, I guess I see them as they're not tied down to any specific event. And as concerns rise, like John's going to host a forum, and I think with Nan, regarding the K-3 schedule. So that, we know, needs a public space so that people can give their thoughts. And as we proceed along in the process that was kind of outlined last week, and I think it's going to be further outlined in some upcoming communications, you know, that makes a lot of sense. I don't know, I guess the coffee or office hours aspect of this sort of doesn't, you know, whoever wants to drop in can drop in. And I think, you know, we hear a lot of times, like, people don't want to And, and I think, you know, we hear a lot of times like people don't want to talk on, in public comment because it's intimidating. Um, you know, this is a much different situation where you can walk in and, you know, two, two people are just sitting there and, and you can have a chat with them. Yeah.
Um, so I think that having a more kind of targeted Q and A, if that's kind of how I think about it, where there's a a necessary topic, so for example, like, schedule, you know, is, is a good example. Um, as needs arise, I think we should do that, and I think John and, and Nan are, are doing that. Um, I agree, we heard it in our, I'm pretty sure in the public comment last week. You know, that, you know, while some people are very comfortable talking in a larger forum, there are a lot of people who aren't comfortable, and I think for that reason, giving an informal way to communicate and still have their voices heard, and you know, that's more, again, back and forth than an email, because an email can be really hard. So, um, you know, I think that informal piece where it can be kind of whatever's concerning you or whatever question you have at the moment where it's not, you know, a large audience where it may be in, for some people, more, um, uncomfortable to, to speak than to give them that opportunity, I think is useful. Um, but I think there's an, you know, I think that gives variety also, you know, so that some people's needs are met through a larger forum and some people's needs are met through, you know, a more informal forum so that whatever is comfortable to, to that person is, their needs are met.
Yeah, Emily?
Um, so I agree with Megan, like I have no issue with a forum or question and answer, but I think it's more based on, like she said, when something comes up, that we should be doing them, I don't think we need to like pick topics just to have them, kind of thing, right? Unless there's something that people really feel we need to talk about. Um, and I'm okay with meeting people for coffee if that's what we decide to do. That's fine.
Um, I think it would be important that we, you know, one month we schedule it in the morning, you know, and the next month it would be scheduled in the evening, you know, so that we're not excluding one group of parents over another, um, that may have an easier time in the morning or may have an easier time in the evening. Um, I'm certainly happy to follow up with Dorothy just to make sure that the two-person piece isn't going to make, isn't going to be an issue. Um, and you know, I don't know, maybe we can try it a few times through December or through, you know, February break, um, you know, just because we want to give it an actual go, um, and come back and, and talk about, you know, what kind of interest we had. Um, and, and if they're worthwhile to, to keep moving forward.
I'm pretty sure I've already talked to MASC about this, you know, because it came up a few years ago too, but definitely worthwhile to follow up, just in case I misunderstood. But I was under that, you know, the same understanding as you, Sarah. Um, I'm happy to try anything, you know, I think it gives another opportunity, and if it's useful, then I think we should try it.
So with, um, sorry, Sarah, um, the forum and John and Nan are doing a forum soon, right? About your forums, your schedule, right?
Nan is putting together the committee that will organize the structure for when there will be a forum.
But you're presenting to parents, right? Or no?
No.
Oh.
Nan is putting together, I, I mean, she's still on the call, she can talk about it, but she's putting together that K to three advisory group, much like the teaching and learning group. And then, um, they're going to have their initial meeting to chart the course, so to speak, about what they want to do, whether it's faculty meetings, school committee updates, forums, community surveys. And so, yes, there will be a forum, I don't, I can't announce the structure of that this evening.
Now, John, I have actually touched base with Nan about this, and my understanding is there, she is not putting together any group that the buildings will be, the building levels will be working within their own buildings to deal with this, that this will not be something spearheaded. Because I originally thought it was kind of explained like, um, almost like one of those teaching and learning committees. And, and I was, my understanding is she's, she's, she's hoping it happens. You know, Sean does one at his building, Brian does one at his building, and it will not be district-centric centered.
I don't believe that's correct, but I see Nan has unmuted herself, so I'll allow her to speak to it.
Sarah, you're, you're absolutely right. When we had initially spoken, that was the way that I was envisioning it. And then John, um, and I had a, an opportunity to talk a little bit more deeply about it. And, um, we landed in that it, it does make sense to have an overall facilitator of the process, so I will facilitate the process, there'll be one member, uh, uh, an instructional support specialist will, will be a member, will have, um, a member of student services. Uh, I'd love to have a school committee member on the team, and then both principals, two teachers from each school, and two parents from each school. And so I've outlined kind of a four, four meetings where there'll be a structure. Well, at the first meeting, like John said, we'll establish what is the framework and what are some of the things we need to plan for and execute over the course of the upcoming four months.
So I just want to be careful that we're not getting off of this agenda item. Um, so if we, if, if anybody's, I'm going to circle back to this piece and new business then, since it has come up. Um, but just, you know, it's kind of pause there. Um, and then I think there's going to be further communications out of it, but I'll circle back in new business just so that we're, you know, not, not getting off course. Megan, did you have a question?
Sarah, when you decide about, when, I know there's been talk about calling MASC or Dorothy, but I would really like for you to call the AG's office because it's not Dorothy or MASC, that's the definitive answer, it's the AG. And they've been pretty clear with me that if two school committee members are discussing school committee business, um, something that's our purview, it needs to be posted, period.
Sure, I can, I can definitely reach out to them and have them, um, give me something written. All right, so general consensus. What if I come back at the next meeting with, and, and work offline with John with a couple of ideas, you know, if we want to structure them with him, what his dates are looking at, if we want to structure them, you know, at, at other times than his, what we'd be looking at, and kind of put out some, some more, a little bit more concrete. Because I think I'm hearing like, yeah, maybe this sounds like it could work, but not totally sure. So, um, I'll come back with a little bit more concrete information and, uh, and we can decide officially if we're going to move forward with it.
Works for me.
Okay, great. Um, that'll give me a chance to talk to the AG as well. So, school committee goals, I wanted to circle about, back on this as well. We had discussed this at our retreat as, um, and sort of said that we would come back to it probably at this meeting. Um, I think, I'm almost positive these got dropped, the, our, our goals from, from last year. There's two pieces to this, one is we talked about evaluating ourselves on, on the goals that we had set last year. Um, we were, we then went offline after that, got a few evaluation tools. Um, I'm going to send one out to the committee that seems kind of like, you know, not too much, too, too, too in-depth where it's getting to be like the superintendent's evaluation, but, um, would provide a nice evaluative tool so that we can look at, at how each of us thinks. Um, we did, so I'm going to send that out, um, probably tomorrow. And then I'll ask maybe that any, that everybody can look that over, fill it out, and send it back to, I don't know, Lisa or me, or Megan, I know this has always been one of your babies, so if you wanted to take it, I'd be happy to give it to you. Um, by a week or so, week, um, maybe the end of next week, that's, I'll, I'll, I'll ask people.
Is it just compiling readings?
Yes.
Okay, that I can do if you need help.
Okay. Does everybody think they can have it? I don't remember what the end of next week is or the beginning of the week after.
The 12th is a Sunday.
The 12th is a Sunday, so maybe the 12th, and it'll give us two full weekends. And then it'll put it before the legal presentation so that we don't kind of get lost with it, with the legal. Does that sound doable to everybody?
So filling out the evaluations.
And sending them to you.
Why do I do this to myself? Um.
By the 12th.
Yeah, that's fine, that's great.
How about, how about we send them to Lisa? And then, we, and then Megan and I can determine which one of us has more bandwidth to, uh, compile the results. And if anybody else wants to compile them, just feel free to, to step forward. Um, but send them to Lisa by the 12th, and then we, either Megan or myself will, uh, compile them, take them from Lisa and compile them. Um, the next piece is then, I would like to ask everybody, since we are, you know, looking at the goals how we did last year, and we need to redevelop goals for this year. Um, you know, I think we had the conversation at the retreat that we met some of the pieces of these goals, maybe some, one of, you know, some of them we met completely, others we met partially, maybe some we didn't meet at all in, in the opinions. But, um, come back to next meeting with additional goal ideas or additional pieces to um, any of the goal, any of these three goals that we had for last year that might make sense to add. You know, if we're, you know, keeping the, keeping the budget one, but we did, you know, one piece of it, is there any other pieces that we'd want to add as we look at other, you know, is keeping, keeping the other pieces and adding to it? Am I making sense?
So evaluation and new goals. So I'm assuming that the subcommittees are submitting their goals, and then if you have anything else personally that you want to have added?
Yeah, yeah, and, but the, the evaluation will come by the 12th. The, the goals, um, come to the next meeting, on the 23rd.
Yeah, because I was going to say, we won't, we'll, we'll meet, I have to look at the calendar, I think it's like the 13th will be the next facilities meeting. So like, we just wouldn't have had our meeting to kind of get that together.
And that's a really quick turnaround for the goals piece.
Yeah, no, sorry, yeah, no, you're right.
Yeah, so the 23rd for our meeting.
Well, maybe just a few days before in the Dropbox.
Yes.
Whatever that Monday is.
Okay, yes. All right, sound doable to everybody? Great. Uh, David, give us an update on the building. You're muted.
I will, I will try one time to see if share screen will work, and if it doesn't, we'll, I'll give my verbal update, so let me just see here.
David, I have one queued up, so I can share my screen if it's the drone video that you would like to show.
That would be great, Dr. Bucky. I'll pause on that and
Is it set music, David?
I couldn't figure out that. Drone, drone and music. There we go.
Can everyone see it? Okay.
Works good.
There is no sound or music, so you're not missing anything.
Pre-K playground. Think it's loading. So if everybody's seeing that, the final skylight, the protective barriers are coming down on the, up on the roof, and this is a great shot that shows the outdoor uh, garden area, the playground. Gives a good perspective, and it's probably, it's already changed in a couple of days since this drone video was taken.
So kudos to Henry Christiansen, the video photography, uh, television production teacher at the high school for the drone videos.
Thank you for that, and, um, I think, um, I'll just go right with, you know, the committee is already, uh, planning for the, the, the weekend ahead. Pretty much the project has been working on Saturdays since March. And so the flooring contractor is one of the key projects that needs to be finished up, and it's hard to do flooring when you have other contractors in the building. So they'll be, they'll be in finishing up main entries and corridors. And the, uh, final painting of areas and classrooms on the first floor and second floor and punch lists are taking place, the, the final cleaning. So what happens now is they're literally going room by room. They'll be doing the final cleaning and closing the doors on the top, on the top floor and going down to the second floor. And the wood flooring contractor is going to continue to finish the work in the gymnasium and doing the logo painting, um, on the floors. So, um, we are looking towards getting our certificate of occupancy the week of September 23rd. And everything is on track there. Uh, next week, um, as I mentioned, uh, Chip Osborne's coming by for a visit, but it's going to be the start of the sod going down on a lot of the landscaping. Um, and we're just kind of dotting our i's and crossing our t's right now with a lot of the work that's going on. And I, I just wanted to mention earlier, you know, we were talking a lot about, you know, Todd and his staff and what's been going on with the opening of schools. At the same time, Todd and his staff have been actively engaged with, uh, the team. And I see Dr. Bucky nodding his head, there's so many systems that his, uh, you know, team need to understand how to operate when the school's opening, and Todd's just been doing an outstanding job. And I'm, I just want to recognize Todd as well as Steve, you know, with all the technology and making sure that's going to be ready to go when the school opens. And it's really been a good team effort from Todd and Steve working in those areas. So, um, you know, the progress is moving forward, and I think, um, we're excited to see the final outcome. We're still clearly on target for the Wednesday after, uh, Indigenous Peoples' Day. And then with getting our certificate of occupancy will allow sort of that soft opening to allow staff to be in the building and teachers to be in the building and to have a, a, a two-week move. Um, um, FFNE has been coming in on a regular basis, that's on schedule. Um, Left Field is doing a really detailed inventory process to make sure that we're getting all the things that we need for the various classrooms. And so that's working out very well, and that's on schedule. And we're getting ready to, uh, button up the kitchen, so there'll be some final testing with, with the kitchen. And we can get in there with that, and it's, um, it's really coming together, so. And as you can see behind me, the, the lights are on. And, uh, the administrative area is just about finished up, the, the desks for when you come into the school, that's a very customized area for the, for admin and staff, and that area is being finished out. And, um, it's all, it's all really coming together. And right now, it's just a matter of going through a lot of the, um, affidavits and things that are required to get the certificate of occupancy, some of the final paving that's been taking place on the streets. The streets look great, the town paved, uh, a large part of the neighborhood. The project finished up the paving on Saturday in front of the school and the sidewalks. And, um, it's just really all coming together, coming together really well. And last but not least, the project continues to track with, uh, budget, um, I guess you'd call it a surplus, but we're still maintaining about 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars of funds that have not been expended to date at this point. So.
Great, David, thank you. Megan, I saw you unmuted, you need to, want to say something?
Yeah, well, I just want to say, you know, the last time I was up there, I think was April. So to see that playground structure and the outside area really come to life, David, it looks great. And I've noticed also, you've had this background for the past few weeks, and it changes every time we, you know, you're on a call. So I love those, uh, they look like buoy lights, um, you know, installed now, so it looks great, it looks really great.
Yeah, and, and I think one, it is, the, the, the theme that we went with, and you know, Sarah was involved in this with, with the colors, uh, the flooring, and RDA has just done a great job of incorporating the nautical theme. And I, I really don't want to give away a lot of it on some of the pitches, there'll be a lot of shock and awe that is just, you know, even some of the things that I see, um, week by week, it's, it's just amazing with, with, um, the theme and how, how that comes together. But I also want to just recognize, I know there's a small group here, but Ralph Wallace is the vice chair of our committee, and And, you know, Ralph has a full-time job working for the state of Massachusetts, and as a consultant in construction. And Ralph has just been an unbelievable asset. I know Dr. Bucky knows this. I know Michelle Cresta knows this. Um, and he's been on-site, if not four days a week, five days a week. He's there on Saturdays. And I just want to give a lot of credit to Ralph, um, for, um, helping move this project forward. He's been a great steward for the town. And, um, working with RDA, Left Field, and myself, the OAC Committee on, you know, I'll give one small example. So the flooring that's going in, some of, there were some challenges with the seams, and so you have to work with the architect and pavilion flooring and Gilbain, and, you know, Ralph was there when they were working through a solution on the seams, and he's been able to be on-site. And, you know, Ralph's just done an outstanding job, um, representing the building committee and the town on this project. And so wanted to recognize, you know, his efforts, um, going forward. And thanks to Ralph.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, David. All right, uh, that leads us to closing business. Um, new business, um, that sort of popped up. Nan, did you have anything else that you wanted to add about the K-3 schedule group, and, um, any kind of communications or anything around that?
I don't think so at this time, Sarah. I'll wait and, um, discuss it with John and see when it would be appropriate to put it on an agenda.
Great, sounds good. Thanks for your continued work on that. Megan, did you have something for new business?
Yeah, I mean, I could send an email on this too, but since we've got everybody here, I mean, if we're, is it possible to get subcommittee meeting dates for our next meeting or our first meeting, October's? Because I'd love to get them all posted out on our website, so that we can make sure the community knows when to expect those. That would be great.
Sure, yeah. So, um, by the next, basically by the next meeting on the 23rd, uh, the next regularly scheduled meeting, have the, pick the date and time for, that each month the subcommittee will be meeting.
Yeah, or if it's going to be more regular than that, but yeah.
Yes, yeah. All right, uh, any other new business? Okay, there was no correspondence, so I will adjourn us at 9:13 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.